Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, January 18th, 2022. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Ray Rower.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez Jr.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. Next is to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson to adopt the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the agenda is adopted.
Actually, I should abstain since I was stuck in an airport during that meeting, I think.
For the agenda?
Oh, for the minutes is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, alright. I don't have any proclamations and presentations. Speaking of that, we're up to the approval of the minutes of the previous minute of the previous meeting.
Mayor?
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of January 4th, 2022.
My second. Motion by Griscoviac, second by Hernandez Jr. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And now all abstain.
That motion carries. One abstent and Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you.
Alright. We have five items on our consent agenda this evening. The first one is item two on this evening's agenda, and that's to accept the right-of-entry agreement with MK Property Holdings LLC. The council approved a final plat for MK Business Park dividing the property into two commercial lots. The developer removed the existing small convenience store located at 1829 North Dale Boulevard in late 2021 and plans to redevelop the site with a multi-tenant commercial building in a car wash. I feel like we're answering so many social media questions right now. This is the corner of Hanson and Northdale where the BP used to be, and they're redeveloping it and they're adding a multi-tenant commercial building in a car wash. Okay. The right-of-entry agreement will allow the city to enter onto both properties to maintain the water main system for public safety purposes, including hydrant flushing twice per year and exercising of the gate valves. The water main system within the site is considered private, and the property owner will continue to own and maintain it. The right-of-entry agreement simply provides the city the ability to assure appropriate public safety. So with that, with this action, we'll be looking to accept the attached right-of-entry agreement with MK Property Holdings LLC for the redevelopment of the site at 829 Northdale Boulevard Northwest. The next item on our consent agenda is to approve final payment to Municipal Builders Incorporated for Project 21-7 Well Rehabilitation. Got lots of dates, but the final completion date was October 29th, 2021, and the amount under the final contract was $43,225. So we're looking to approve the final payment to Municipal Builders Incorporated in the amount of $9,289.20 for Project 21-7 Well Rehabilitation. Item four, which is the next item on our consent agenda, which is item three of five actually, is to approve final payment to SM Henches &amp; Sons Incorporated for Project 18-13 Coon Rapids Boulevard Improvements at Port Riverwalk. The final completion date of this project was June 26th, 2021, and the amount due is This one, we actually went a little over. The change orders were for additional earthwork excavation done along the old Coon Rapids Boulevard frontage road, additional storm sewer trench rock required during construction due to field conditions, adding flowable fill material at the Coon Rapids Boulevard Bridge under the existing concrete slope paving, revising the storm sewer design along Coon Rapids Boulevard, removal of buried concrete at the Coon Rapids Boulevard and Zilla Street intersection, redesign of the irrigation system to include rotating spray heads, and additional work and materials required to provide an adequate pavement section based on in-soil condition, I'm sorry, conditions. So we're looking to approve the change orders and the final payment to SM Henches &amp; Sons Incorporated in the amount of $76,843.73 for Project 18-13 Coon Rapids Boulevard Improvements at Port Riverwalk. Next item on our consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 22-23, accepting a donation for a park bench. The family of Bob Thistle has donated $700 to purchase a park bench as a tribute to Bob Thistle, who recently passed away. Bob was the city manager from July 1979 through December of 1987. He also served as a volunteer on the Civil Service Commission, and he was also so involved with so many things. But the family is donating $700 to dedicate a park bench in his name, so we're looking to adopt Resolution 22-23 to accept a $700 donation from the family of Bob Thistle. And then item five, I'm sorry, item six, which is the fifth and final item on our consent agenda, is to adopt Resolution 22-24, accepting a donation to the fire department. Mr. Eugene Miriam donated $1,000 to the fire department in appreciation for their service to the community. We're looking to adopt Resolution 22-24 formally accepting the donation, and that's actually, that's the motion. We're looking to adopt Resolution 22-24, accepting a donation to the fire department, and that was a very generous donation of Mr. Miriam for $1,000.
Your honor.
Councilmember Johnson.
With particular thanks to Gene Miriam and the family of Bob Thistle, I would like to move approval and acceptance and adoption of the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Geisler. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Echo the gratitude that we have for the generosity on those two donations. We know that the park bench will be in Lyons Park. Do we know what the donation to the fire department would be used for? Or is it up to the discretion of the fire department? The fire chief's not here.
Mayor, council, it has not been specified as of yet what that contribution will be used toward, but typically donations of this type get used for like community program of some sort, whether it be in the schools, smoke detector program, things like that.
Got it. Thank you. Just for those who may not know, Gene Miriam is a Coon Rapids resident, served on the council for a long time, also served in the state senate, and was the commissioner of the Department of Natural Resources for a long period of time, too.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
I just want to add, well, thanks to Gene Miriam and thanks to the Thistle family, and I had the privilege of working for Bob Thistle for a year, class act, and a wonderful servant of this community.
Alright. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. We are on to item seven, which is to consider Resolution 22-3/8, accepting plans and specifications for 105th Avenue, Hanson Boulevard, mill and overlay, and authorize solicitation of bids. Mr. Hammer, you want to cover that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council. Similar to the last few years, we look at some of our state aid roadways that have minimal accessible properties on them, and we look at trying to do an early season project to get ahead, excuse me, of the construction season and get paving contractors when they're hungry. So it's been successful for us for the last few years. We've identified these two roadways as the next ones to have that treatment, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All those people that go to Riverview Park for National Little League, or Cardinal Little League now, or Pizza Flame are going to be very thankful.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 22-3/8, accepting plans and specifications for 105th Avenue and Hanson Boulevard, mill and overlay, and authorize the solicitation of bids.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Ray Rower. Any discussion on this? This is really, we have found this to be a really good value, these mill and overlays. We've done this to Xavier's and to Avacet, and I don't recall what else we've done, but it really is a good value, and that little section of Crooked Lake Boulevard, too, I believe. So, yeah, good value. Alright, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are on to item eight, to consider introduction of an ordinance repealing Chapter 5-1800 saunas, massage parlors, and similar adult-oriented services, masseurs and masseuses. Sounds like we just ended up with a little redundancy here. Ms. Lundgren?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. That section is no longer needed as we regulate it through the therapeutic massage code with the educational requirements.
Alright. Does anybody have any questions or need any updating on this? Alright. Hearing none, then we will consider this introduced. Our next item, which is also just an introduction, is to consider an introduction of an ordinance repealing Section 5-1900, which covers conversation parlors. And in this one, isn't a redundancy, we're apparently just eliminating this section.
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. It's no longer something that folks do with the advent of the internet.
I had to look it up. I wasn't even sure what it was. That's exactly what it sounds like, sort of, but... Anybody have any questions or need any further information on this?
Your honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I just want people to understand that this is part of what the city, and I have to give credit to Wade Demmer, too, as a part of this, has asked, the city council has asked the city staff to do, which is to take a look at all of our ordinances, and if there are ones that are particularly unnecessary anymore, then let's just tidy up the ordinances that we have. And so that's part of this review process, and I really appreciate city staff taking a look at the ones that really just don't even make any sense anymore, so we don't have to wade through that or have any of that flack in there. So, it is a little strange that we have to introduce an ordinance to repeal an ordinance, but that is the process.
Yeah, yeah. And apparently, if you do want a conversation parlor, Rosemont still licenses them, because that was my internet search that brought me here.
And if you're really against this, go ahead and email your city council.
Yeah, right. Now, let us know before the next meeting if this is gonna... Alright, so if there's no questions or discussion, we will consider, we'll consider the ordinance repealing Section 5-1900 introduced. Item 10 is to consider Resolution 22-25, establishing Bunker Hill's golf course fees and charges. Mr. Anderson, you want to come up and talk to us, or are you going to sit there and talk to us, or do you want to wait and see if anybody has any questions?
No, I can certainly, if you can hear me, I can kind of go over things. You know, it's good news certainly in my mind, if we're here asking for rates, that there will be a golf season at some point. It's fun to operate a golf simulator center, but there's nothing like the real thing, and we can't wait to get back after it, hopefully in March and beyond. So, what you see here is more than normal increases recommended. Where we have more of a substantial increase are those areas where we were somewhat significantly under market, you know, less than our competitive set. That's in our midday and our twilight rates. You know, these rates, the recommended increases are mainly for two reasons this year. One is because we were significantly below market, and then the cost of doing business has gone up in a lot of ways. You know, it's not the cheapest sport to play, it's not the cheapest recreational activity, but it's also very expensive to operate, and I know that you all know that. Certainly, golf has gotten more popular recently, and we love that, and we hope that continues, but we have to plan for a long-term future and satisfy our bottom-line requirements. So that's why you see a little bit bigger increases at those times, and then just minimal increases on our regular fees. Not all of them, junior rates have not increased. And then our patron cards that we sell, and last year we sold a record number, well over 2,000 patron card members at Bunker Hills. Those have not gone up in quite a few years, so we are recommending a $5 increase on all of our annual memberships. And then the only other one of note is the individual power cart, which is a new rate. When you come to a golf course and rent a cart, most all golf courses, you rent one side of the cart, and we've always had that rate. But over time, and for a long time, people have wanted to ride alone, it became, you know, it was very interesting, at the beginning of the pandemic, it was mandated you ride alone, and then it was, there was a delighted in the cart, and et cetera, et cetera, but we wanted to make sure there was a rate if someone did want to ride alone and purchase the entire cart, so we've added that in there, and essentially doubled the rate.
Okay.
Sorry, that was kind of an abrupt end, but that's kind of...
Well, and it was, it was.
That kind of summarizes the recommended proposed increases. Of course, if anyone has any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Yeah, and I'm assuming you still have your smiling face behind there somewhere, we're just not seeing it.
It's in there somewhere, yeah.
Okay, that's good. So, most of these rates are like, you know, the retail slide, you know, the 38 to 39, or, you know, 18 to 20. I'm just wondering, you know, when you bump over to the next hump, you know, when you go to the store, everything's $29.99. I'm just, do you think we're going to have any pushback on some of those, some of those rates that make the bigger jumps?
You know, I don't think so. I think that they were so competitively priced, and there was a lot of reason for that. We were soft in those areas for a few years, so we bumped those rates actually down a little bit. Normally, we just float our regular rate through the afternoon and on. We reduced those rates. So those are just bumping up a little bit, but nowhere, not to where they were before. So they're increasing more to the middle.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, Mr. Anderson?
Your honor.
Councilmember Ray Rower?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 22-25, establishing Bunker Hill's golf course fees and charges.
Second.
Motion and a second. We're not even going to make them squirm at all?
I think you did a great job. I think, I think, these, there isn't a, I think the only change that is even approaching 10% is a $4 bump. So, I was actually surprised that they were, you know, as little as they were. So, it's a great value.
Alright, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Item 11 is to affirm a declaration regarding public meetings and the COVID-19 pandemic. Mr. Stemwaddle.
Mayor, council, this is intended to provide some flexibility over the coming weeks related to public meetings, and such that if there are council members or members of our commissions that have a need to attend via electronic means, in our case, we use Zoom, or if they just have an underlying health condition or some other reason pandemic-related for attending that official meeting via electronic means, that they could do that and not be required to be in a public place, which is a bit of a sticking point in the statute, when you don't sort of make this declaration of pandemic. And so ultimately, what the statute requires is for one of the key officials in the city to make a declaration that it's not prudent and practical at this time to compel everybody to meet in person. So, via this memo on Friday, I made that declaration. At least, that's the vehicle we used. What I'm asking council to do tonight is confirm that, and then what we've done is suggest a timeline that council approve this through March 1st. Really, ultimately, that's for planning purposes. If we get towards March 1st, that coincides with the city council meeting, we could extend it that night if the council would so choose, or we could let it expire, you know, if COVID cases seem like they're in a much more manageable spot. So, that's really the intent of this item, and we'll stand for questions.
I think that's reasonable. I mean, today, they just, the Mayo just came out with their study, and they figure we're going to peak in eight days, and then we should have a precipitous drop-off. So, I thought the date, the timeline was good. I also noticed that we're getting a little more strict. You know, last time, I think we got a little more relaxed with the Zoom, but if participating through electronic means, the council or commission member must be able to be seen and heard at all times by all other members and the public. And additionally, if there are council or commission members attending a meeting through electronic means, the body must conduct votes by roll call so that each member's vote can be identified and recorded.
Yes, Mayor, council, and that's language from the statute itself, and some of this language was borrowed from the League of Minnesota City's guidance on electronic meetings, so it wasn't necessarily what we invented, but it's the process that's been outlined for us.
Your honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I would move that the city council affirm the city manager's declaration under Minnesota statute 13D.021, that conducting public meetings solely in person is not practical or prudent, and recommend that the city establish that this temporary policy is effective through March 1st, 2022, unless otherwise acted upon by the city council.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Geisler. Discussion?
Your honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
Hey, I really appreciate city staff opening up this opportunity and consulting with the council about it. I mean, as some of the council members here know, you know, I had planned to be at the January 4th meeting, and because of COVID and because of cancellations of flights and being forced to rebook flights to return, I was unable to attend the city council meeting, notwithstanding my intentions on being here in person for that meeting and booking to do it. Had this been in place at that point in time, I would have been able to attend the city council meeting and participate in it, albeit it would have been from an airport where I was on a layover, but I would have been able to still participate. And so there are just things that are happening in the world, you know, like cancellations of flights, or sometimes like exposures that require us to have this flexibility, and I appreciate the council being open to that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, so I would reiterate, reiterate that, you know, just the flexibility, because we don't know, you know, who's going to feel good next week, or whatever. And, you know, if you have been exposed but still want to participate, that's important for us, especially those elected officials, to be able to participate and to have that flexibility, you know, and give us that option should we need it over the next month.
Alright. Any other discussion?
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griscoviac?
I am in support of this, especially with the effective date, you know, of March 1st, and then we'll look at it again. We talked about it in work session, too, but it is going to be more disruptive if people aren't here and things like that, and do a roll call and everything like that. And it is, we talked about this, it's just more productive when the bodies together, so hopefully we'll be able to maintain that for the public.
Yeah, well, I think with most of the council having had COVID in the last two weeks, we should, we should be good now.
Speak for yourself.
Well, no, I am. I'm just, I know the numbers here, but...
That's true, they're so mature.
Yeah, alright. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Alright, and we are up to the open-mic public comment portion, and unless somebody from staff wants to talk to us, I think we're going to skip through that. And we are on to other business.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler?
I just wanted to say, so, obviously, last Friday, there was some snow, and on Saturday, there was an all plow, so where they went out for the whole city. And sent my little note on Friday and said, can I ride along? And so I got to go ride along with the snowplow drivers on Saturday morning. Was not quite fun getting up at 3:30 in the morning, mind you, but I wanted to thank Josh Peterson, who helped coordinate that along with Mr. Hammer, and then Mark Starr, who was the driver. And it was a fabulous experience. And so, anybody on council, if you haven't done it yet, go do it. But for residents, yes, if it was Friday was your trash day, it's Saturday, your cans really should be back in. Please, it makes it so much easier for the drivers. The other piece, if you do have your cans out and it's a pickup day, make sure that they're out of the street, right? We don't want to have the plow drivers risk, you know, hitting a full can or anything like that and making a mess. And then, again, we have no overnight parking. And there was a lot of empty garbage cans still in the streets and cars parked that were, made it a little bit more difficult to get all the way through and do the job that they need to do, but they do a phenomenal job, and I wanted to thank them for the opportunity. And they do a great job.
Yeah, they do. Mr. Hammer, was the, we got the full plow on Saturday because of the winds, because we didn't get three inches, did we? Because it seemed like the exact same scenario we had a couple weeks earlier.
It was between the Friday and Saturday. So, as it was snowing Friday evening, we always pull off the roads prior to that evening commute, so we clean up the best we can on the collector roads, and then we came back to do a full plow, which really was just clean up those collectors one more time and do the residential neighborhoods. So we wouldn't have to have the compaction and everything that comes back the following Monday, which would have been, which would have been Tuesday because of the extra holiday. And so there was the, let's combine Friday and Saturday into this period and go out and try to address it before it sits for an extra day or two.
Okay, alright. Yeah, I was surprised when I saw the note that doing the full plow. I was glad, but I was just surprised when I saw it.
Now I know to blame Councilmember Geisler for that three-foot wall at the end of my drive. I know. But, Mr. Mayor, just one other...
Councilmember Johnson?
I just wanted to say, I, I'm just teasing a little bit here. Those plows that we bought, the new plows that have the added features to them in cul-de-sacs, holy cow, do they work nicely. There is a marked difference in how clean they get the cul-de-sacs and how they're able to direct things to a particular place, and so I just wanted to commend Public Works on that. I, Mr. Hammer brought that idea to us recently, and I think that's been a great addition to the arsenal that we have for dealing with the snow. Thank you.
Well, I will thank you, but I won't take all the credit, because Josh Peterson does a heck of a job, as do the employees that are out plowing the snow. They know what they need, and they ask for it, and you all provide it, so thank you.
Please thank them for us.
Alright, sounds good.
I didn't get to drive, but that was probably a good thing.
Thankfully. I was just picturing Johnson lives there, pile the snow there.
Other business to come before council this evening. Mr. Stemwaddle, anything?
Mayor, council, I guess I'll just mention that Winter Concert Series is coming up here. You can get your tickets, so you can check that out online.
Yeah, just had our first one last week, I think, on the 13th, right?
And the next one is February 10th, The Backyard Band. But we also have Snowflake Days. That's coming up, the ice sculpture contest, and I don't know if we've got another meeting before the community parade. Maybe we do, there's two parades, February 1st and February 3rd, so I think it's the first night of our next council. And then the Family Fund at Ice Arena on Sunday, February 6th. So, lots of things coming up in the next couple of weeks with Snowflake Day, so check that out on the website.
Yep, very good. Everybody should have gotten a city newsletter a couple, like, a week or two ago in the mail, and I implore you to go through it. It's got all the Snowflake Days information in it. It has all of the housing programs that we have, the Front Door, the Home for Generations, all of those are in there. So, just, it's a lot of, a wealth of information for the city.
Yeah, that's one that shouldn't be thrown away, because all year long, you can draw upon the information that's in there.
Yep. And all of us, our contact information, so if there's anything, you know, you need to reach out. And then the other piece is our budget. Our budget and brief just got posted, so the financial budget for, you know, this year is out. We just got our hard copy books tonight, and so all of that is also available on our website.
Alright.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griscoviac?
Well, we have our Public Works Director here. I noticed there was a public notice last week that there could potentially be some aeration on Crooked Lake, and it looks like it would be kind of right outside that fishing pier. Is, does that happen for sure? Is there a certain criteria where that would happen?
Yes, Councilmember Griscoviac, that is something that typically does happen on an annual basis. We correspond with the DNR, and when they find that levels are meeting a certain threshold, then they contact us to go ahead and fire that up and get it going. It, I've been here 10 years, and I don't remember a year that we didn't turn it on.
Alright. And is it in the same spot?
Yes.
It is, okay. Thank you.
Alright. Any other business to come before council this evening?
Mr. Mayor.
Chief Wise?
Actually, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, there's going to be a story on, on Channel 5 KSTP tonight, a good Samaritan in the city of Coon Rapids. We had a car that fled from our officers, eventually came to a stop. The man jumped out of his car with an AR-15 rifle. Good Samaritan jumped from his house, seeing what happened, and tackled the person. Now, obviously, we don't recommend citizens doing that. That said, it'd be a sad state of affairs if I didn't do a shout-out to this fellow, and there'll be something in front of the council in the future. So just wanted to let you know about that.
Not sure where to go with that.
It's a peculiar story, but I didn't, it's going to be in the news, and somebody's going to bring it up to you, so I didn't want to have it not get mentioned to you tonight. So just watch the news story on KSTV.
I mean, could have been a completely different outcome, I know, but I love this community. Absolutely. Love it. All right. Well, I don't know how we're going to top that, so somebody should just make a motion to that.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Carlson. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.